The Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The way things are going, I guess we better enjoy being able to say that while we're able to say that. Editorial comment, I don't know what came over me. Okay. The approval of the agenda. Would somebody, I don't know, you want to make that motion or assume you're ready to go?
Mr. Chair, I have one question, and actually Commissioner Mergan might be able to help me with this. We had a person call or apply for a position on HRA. For my district, we've been vacant of that for a number of months, and now we do have one. And so I would like to fill that spot, but it wasn't, he applied last week, but it didn't get put on the agenda. Commissioner Mergan, is there a meeting prior to our next meeting as far as HRA is concerned? Jeff, are you there?
I don't see him.
Yeah, I don't see Jeff.
No, I don't see him either.
My question would be, Steve Kron had applied for the position, and again, we've been unfilled in my district for about six months. I had been searching quite some time to find somebody to fill it, but now we do have that. Can that be added, or is it too late to add that?
I don't know why you can't add it if you want to.
Fellow commissioners, any objection?
So this might be a process question. Do we actually appoint that, or does the HRA board?
Actually confirm them.
Then they'll say.
Make a recommendation, and then those come to the.
Since they're a separate, quasi-separated entity.
We could, can we put it into the consent? Is that a possibility?
That is, I don't even know who it is. I mean, from a public standpoint, don't we need to actually give them some, something?
If I can object, is it that important that they be appointed right now, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked if Jeff was here. I just, if we could include him into the next meeting. I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll, we'll not do it then. And actually, if they want to maybe attend, they can attend without being a voting member.
He's coming on.
Yeah, I think Jeff is coming on now.
Jeff?
Yeah, I think we should wait, though.
I do, too.
Okay.
Want us to wait for Jeff to join us? Is that the consensus of the esteemed body? Okay, well.
I'll move the consent agenda as printed.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Great. All those in favor say aye. Roll call, District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District, District Three. District Four says aye. District Five, Steve?
Aye.
All right. Yeah, the, if Jeff doesn't connect for a few more minutes, then I guess we'll have to make the correction that he wasn't present, but there may be a technical issue on his end relative to his participation. Next on our agenda is a public hearing regarding a tax abatement for the Pilgrim's Pride project. The, Mike, you want to take over on that one?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just remind the, remind you of what is before you. You set the public hearing for this at your last meeting, and it is a tax abatement request by Pilgrim's Pride. They're planning to expand and begin real soon, and we'll have representatives that'll talk about the project, but they intend to add 130 jobs and a building expansion of 50,000 square feet with an additional equipment investment of $52 million and a total project of $75 million. The request for an abatement is for 75% of the taxes that will be paid only on the additional building, the building expansion. So that would be limited to a value of $4 million. And the Tax Abatement Committee recommended approval of a 10-year abatement of 75% of those property taxes. Both the city of Cold Spring and the school district have approved, have approved the abatement, and they've left the, left the term of the abatement undetermined at this time until they see what, you know, what the county has done, or that, so that they know what all public have done, because the law allows a different level of abatement if there's, if there's, if all jurisdictions are not involved. So that's just a reminder of what the request is. I know that we're going to have the city, I believe the city administrator on to make some comments, and then we have representatives of Pilgrim's Pride through Austin Consulting, and a representative actually from Pilgrim's Pride, Katie Ragelman from Austin Consulting, and Wes Smith from Pilgrim's Pride, I think, is who we have. I don't know, hopefully they're there and can speak to their project and their request.
Okay. The, are there any representatives from either the city of Cold Spring or Pilgrim's Pride that, I know, Katie, would you like to comment on this and introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity for us to discuss this with you. We have long enjoyed a partnership with the county, the city, and are excited about the expansion. You all have seen the different facts about the project, the investments, the jobs, and kind of more information on what the funds will be used for. And so we're asking for up to 15 years on a tax abatement, 75% of it. The reason that we have decided to go about the route of a tax abatement rather than a TIF is just because of the timing of the project. We're excited to get this, get construction started, looking to start hiring in the first quarter of 2021 and be fully operational then. So it's a, it's a quick timeline here, and especially with our Minnesota winters, we want to make sure that we get construction to a point that we can continue it through the weather. Wes, did you want to talk a little bit more about what exactly the project is consisting of?
Sure. So our project is mostly consisting, Katie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So mostly our project is consisting of expanding our sales mix inside our facility, which will be transitioning more from a bulk box that supplies restaurants or further processing into expanding our tray pack, which is our local Golden Plum, and our Just Bared Chicken brands, with the idea of helping out, keep stores a little bit better stocked during COVID and how we progress through that. And that's why the equipment to do that is so expensive. And again, you know, in full disclosure, we're going to do this expansion. We've already started, we've got 10 walls up, we're taking down final walls now. We're really just asking for help with the capital cost that we have to put in all at once to see if we can offset some of that.
Back up a little bit between Randy, Wes, and Katie. It might have some merit to contrast and compare an abatement versus tax increment financing, and a little bit of explanation might explain why you're going the abatement route.
Yeah, so I can go ahead and address that. It basically comes out financially to be kind of the same goal with a tax abatement and a TIF. The TIF process tends to be quite lengthy, goes through multiple approval processes and a lot, lot more legal paperwork that's going to be involved. And that's why we did not discuss moving forward with the TIF. It just, with our timeline, it just would not be able to work out. We're trying to make this investment quickly. We're trying to get things up and running early next year, and unfortunately, a TIF just would not be appropriate. If circumstances were a little bit different and we did have the time, that's definitely what we would go for, is the TIF. But, you know, in many conversations that we've had with the county, the city, the school board, tax abatement is just going to be more appropriate for this project. So I do just want to remind the board here that we are just asking for the tax abatement on the incremental taxes that the project will bring. We've worked with finance of the city to, and the county assessor to take a look at the estimated proposed market value, as well as the estimated real estate taxes. So it's just going to be on that incremental amount above what the current real estate taxes are right now.
And Lee, for the county's perspective, tax increment financing, we have say in that, we can make comments on that, but that's the city decision. And then they would, we're here, we're only funding the 75%, and we can bury that, they don't need the job growth. Also, for our levy, it does add to our levy, so it is something that's going to add to our levy in 2022 if they need the requirements. If we do get levy limits, this is typically one of the things that is allowed above limit.
Thanks for the explanation. Maybe that's more detail than most would require, but the question does come up.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I'll get after it. On the tip, would it be, would it be basically refunding the same tax property?
Yeah, it runs through the city, and they set up a project, and they, they're only doing the increment also, but they'll take the full increment. We're here doing 75%.
And now whether it's, that's if it's a TIF, right? Thanks.
Additionally, sometimes the timing can change on a TIF as compared to a tax abatement. As discussed earlier, we are requesting 15-year tax abatement. However, if all three taxing districts are participating, which currently we do have the support of both the city and Rurkory School Board, then it would be a 10-year tax abatement that, that we'd request. So sometimes a TIF can be up to 20 years.
Any other questions about the contrasting and comparing the two approaches? TIF encourages, in my opinion, a lot more soft costs, and as stated, it does take longer. And it's a case of, when TIF was designed, it was well-intended, but over the years, with subsequent changes, and this is opining now, it has reduced its effectiveness. So that's what you're seeing. Any other questions regarding this, or anybody, I don't know how we facilitate the public hearing ask for this, but that's what we're going through.
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions on this by somebody?
I've got a question. I think it might be helpful just for board to know, I had talked with Bill Lanners about this, either Wes or Katie, can you talk about some of the safety protections, the enhanced safety that's going to come in? I know you obviously learned a lot during COVID. We've obviously had a number of conversations. Can you, can you speak to that?
Sure. So the biggest part of it is, you know, during COVID, we built a, what amounts to be a fully finished out full barn to increase our break room spacing that we can spread people out. But inside this project is a full three and a half million dollars that we will be expanding as full, like attached to the building with extra rest rooms, extra locker rooms, extra, basically all the many things that have to run our facility will be included in this project. We could be breaking ground on that next week, actually. So that'll allow the property at the time to really struggle. We've seen, you know, obviously great improvement with the implant stuff, but as we get closer to winter, that's one of the concerns, and so something we'll address in this project.
Okay. Questions on this matter? This is a public hearing. Anybody else have any questions, clarifications on this particular matter? I forgot to open the public hearing, but you can, I just assumed we were there already, but nevertheless, we're functioning now as if I did it right. So if there aren't any other questions from anybody, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I guess the next appropriate action, I guess, would be to what, move approval of this request?
Mr. Chair, just, just to note, you know, we did, when we advertised this public hearing, we noted that people certainly email or mail or leave phone messages in lieu of appearing in person, and there was no, no comments from the public.
Okay. All right. Any other germane comments someone might have? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I guess the next step would be to approve the request. Randy, would that be the appropriate step?
Yeah, approving the resolution that was provided in your packet.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to do that?
Tomo.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Do we have a second to the motion?
Jeff, are you there?
I'll take that sec. Not sure anybody can hear me. Okay, now I can hear you.
I can hear you.
All right. If a motion's been made and seconded, we'll do a roll call. All those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair, I had some discussion on this issue.
Okay. Discuss.
Okay. I'll tell you what, I'm having some reservations about moving this forward, as I had when we had discussed it as far as moving forward with the public hearing. There are some other underlying issues around this that I just want to point out. It's not that I'm getting the plan, I'd like to see the plan happen, but, you know, in my tenure with the board, we've not granted an abatement. The fact that they're moving forward with the plan regardless of whether or not we approve this abatement is a sign that they necessarily don't need the abatement, but it's just the way you do business, that anybody that's going to do an expansion asks for the abatement because, you know, it's more profitable to have the abatement than not. And I look at, you know, our tax structure, and is there fairness there? Is there a need here? Is it a dire need? I don't see the dire need to grant the abatement other than it'll improve their bottom line, and it's just a nice gesture by us. Also, in dealing with the, with the company, we've got a number of issues that have been out there on the table. Back in April, we tried to meet with them about worker conditions and the COVID, and then one day before the meeting, they decided to drop the meeting with us. Also, they have four pending OSHA violations that haven't been resolved as far as the conditions inside the plant and what OSHA has brought charges against the plant with. Likewise, if you, you may or may not have seen, but even at the corporate level, the CEO has been accused of price fixing on chickens. And, you know, I just wonder, you know, that's another indication of, you know, being more concerned about bottom line more than anything else. Now, that being said, there's no question about it being a great asset to the community and the poultry industry, the ag industry in central Minnesota. However, I have a difficult time supporting the use of the abatement to move the project when the project's moving forward by itself.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so Joe, who, what group was going to meet with him this spring?
This was actually a workers' group, and Commissioner Clark and myself were to be, we're going to meet with some people from the plant about conditions.
And Joe, I think, I don't think I was actually a part of that particular meeting, but there was a separate meeting, my understanding. I don't know if we want to give them an opportunity to say anything. I will say, I was glad that they did, we're working with our, our staff and working to address a number of the things brought up by workers and the community members, and that's going to be an important thing moving forward. So I'm glad you brought that up, Joe, but I think it wasn't us as a board meeting with them.
And it sounds like their plans for the measure, I think that's what people may be saying.
Yes, Steve, I agree that, you know, the expansion should be doing that, but again, I go back to the basic premise about the hardware store, the grocery store, you know, the expansion out there on Cold Spring Brewery and Beverage. We, you know, we didn't give them a basement, Tropic Bus, we didn't give an abatement to. This project's moving forward, and it's already been a ham. And I'll tell you what, I do appreciate your work and your job as far as bringing it down to 75% in only 10 years, because if it goes through, I would be okay with that.
Okay. Any other comments by any of the board members?
Mr. Chair, I know that unfortunately, the question came, I guess, or the comments came after you closed the public meeting. Is it possible to have Wes address any of those things? It sounds like there's some benefits. I share some of Commissioner Persky's concerns. Some benefits in terms of ensuring versus with TIF that the expansion really does include this level of employees and that this is likely to go forward without us or with us, and there's, so there's some advantages to this. But I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, if you have other thoughts, and/or if we can let Wes draw some of that, because I think, Commissioner Persky, you bring up a number of important points.
Okay, well, my decision is based, would be based on whether I want to see process get in the way of progress and in terms of conducting the business that we have to do. If someone from any area of this proposal would wish to chime in in response to this recent discussion, I would certainly be willing to allow them to share those thoughts. Does anybody want to expand and clarify these comments?
Chairman?
Sure. I can respond to some of Commissioner Persky's comments there, and they're all very fair. So, so the first one I'd respond to would be the meeting that we have with team members. I think, as Commissioner Clark said, the meeting happened, it just wasn't with the group that was originally organizing it. Some information came to Pilgrim's that some of the people organizing that conversation were part of an organizing body, and we chose to talk to community leaders in our own facility, more of an employer-to-employee relationship. And it was very productive. After that conversation, we did shut the plant down, we did do some things that they requested, and it was very, it was humbling to hear their feedback, and I believe that the staff and the way it's been, that the community or our worker community has come back and seen that worthwhile. You know, we have done improvements in the process as well. I'll say that with this project, we intend to do things right from the building, and I don't think we were prepared from the building facility at the start, but, and then, you know, I think that's, that's the point that we can respond to. If I missed one, just let me know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications? Wes is willing to participate in this aspect, the discussion? Anything else? Otherwise?
Chairman Lenzler, this is Bridget Murphy from the city of Cold Spring. I just want to, I just want to clarify, we did do a TIF district for the expansion at the brewery, so there was a TIF project done recently in the city. So there was a comment about whether or not we did that for the, for the brewery, there was assistance to the brewery's expansion.
Bridget, this is Jeff Mergan. I missed part of this, I've been having some computer issues, and I was wondering, could you kind of review what the city is going to be doing?
Yep, the city did approve, and in the process, we have our meeting next week, and we'll have the development agreement and a business subsidy agreement. The terms have not been approved yet, that's going to be blank. They were waiting to hear about how the county and the school district did. There's a, the discussion was up to 15. I have a feeling that if you pass a resolution, I believe yours has a 10-year term, the city council will likely stay in that 10-year term, and so will likely the school district.
Thank you. Okay. I'm kind of with Joe on this, I'm a little bit torn one way or the other. I remember we used to have something called the Butt Four thing, I know that came up in the past, so I don't know where to go with this one, really.
I don't know, maybe, maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but I think the Butt Four test related to TIF applications, I'm not arguing with you, Jeff, or, you know, saying, no, that's not how it is. I just remember that that was a common element of the TIF requests, you know? If you're following this, there's a motion on the table to approve this if with the subsequent discussion, which, you know, the record probably, if somebody wants to split hairs, the record could indicate is out of order, but nevertheless, if you want additional information or more time to consider this, you all have enough parliamentary experience to know that a motion to table would take precedence, and so would be something you could do instead of, otherwise I'm going to call a question, so what's your draw there, it's like, you know?
Mr. Williams. I just reiterated a little bit of the, it includes, it basically, we had the abatement committee, it would be part of this motion, is a 10-year abatement, starting in taxes payable 2022, and only 70% of the $4 million of improvements, and then Pilgrim's is supposed to employ an additional 130 people, and they will not appeal the property tax evaluation for the term of the abatement. I don't know if Mr. Williams wants to, or ran to chime in, but there are, we did put some pretty strict requirement. I don't know if, um, Mr. Williams wants to, or Randy to chime in, but you know, there are, we did put some pretty strict requirement.
Yeah, yeah, everything you said, Commissioner, is exactly right, and it's in the resolution.
The only other comment I would make, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, is um, per our policy, does, this does take a four-fifths affirmative vote. So it's more than a simple majority here, so.
Oh, okay. Thanks for the clarification. I had forgotten that. Uh, okay, uh, what does the, uh, what, what do you want to do, folks? Uh, do you, uh, you got, you got a number of possibilities here. Uh, unless I hear from somebody to do something, I'm going to call for the vote. Okay, uh, all those in favor of approving the request, say aye. Uh, we'll do the roll call. District one?
While I share some of the reservations, I think that you've put some good protections in here, so I vote aye.
District two?
Uh, with all the things out there and our past history and uh looking where we are with uh the tax situation and the fact that they're, they're building it anyway, I am voting nay.
Okay, uh, district three? I vote aye. Uh, district four is me, I'll vote aye. District five, Steve?
Aye.
Okay. Well, we got four fifths, so the uh, uh, the request is approved. Uh, I don't know, maybe uh the subsequent discussion, even though it was disorderly, it certainly had merit. So, uh, I think, uh, I think we clarified the issue, not because of what we did, but in spite of what we did, so that was helpful. Okay, well, uh, thank you, uh, folks, uh, moving along, uh, to the human services, uh, board, uh, consent items. Uh, does anybody have any questions about any of those uh, uh, items under consent? We got a cooperative agreement by the metro counties, uh, uh, to purchase non-emergency medical equipment. Uh, does, uh, any questions on that? And if there aren't any questions, a motion would be appropriate.
I will make a motion and just want to say I really appreciate our county attorney's office and emergency services for making that agreement work.
All right, thank you, Terrell. Uh, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, further discussion? If there's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor say aye. We'll go by district roll call. District one?
Aye.
District two? Okay, so, is that two votes or? District three?
Aye.
Uh, I vote aye. District four. District five?
Aye.
All right. Uh, thank you, folks. Uh, next item is to approve uh an amendment to a grant agreement on uh HIV early intervention services. Uh, uh, somebody, uh, you want an explanation of, uh?
I actually was moving the whole agenda, the consent agenda.
Oh, you want to do the whole thing?
Well, the consent agenda.
Okay, well, uh?
We need to re-
Is that okay with, is that okay with everybody to, uh, include items two and three in those motions?
That's what I thought I was voting on.
Yeah.
Okay. That's normal, Terrell. What would you suggest, uh, be appropriate then?
I guess my question would be to Randy, do we need to, can we incorporate that we thought that's what we're voting on? Or because, you know, our chair wasn't sure of that, should we just revote?
Um, i- if you like, it's normally that you do the whole consent agenda at once, so.
So do you think we don't need to?
I, I don't think so, but if somebody opposed, is, didn't have that intention, I guess we can go, but.
Everybody, nobody- You're the one with the most legal experience in this, what would you suggest?
I would say just to be safe, Mr. Chair, since you were thinking we were going through them one at a time, that we just quickly go through and.
I'll move in two and three.
Okay, we have a motion for item number two and three on, on the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Terrell. Uh, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four is aye, and Steve, district five?
Aye.
All right. Two steps forward, one step back, but it's still progress. Uh, all right, uh, human services, uh, regular items, uh, the foster care provider discussion. Uh, Melissa, want to uh confuse that issue for us?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Melissa Huberty, the Human Services Administrator. Um, on the Human Services regular agenda, there's one item, it's F1 on page forty-nine, and I wanted to provide information to the board regarding a concerns that were brought forward by a foster care provider, Mr. Dan Becker. Um, by way of reminder, Mr. Becker's concerns were provided to the board at the last meeting on September twenty-second, twenty twenty. Uh, Mr. Becker, Becker has requested that all social services staff who make adult foster care placements complete a four-question survey that he's created. Our understanding is that he's hoping to use this information to prove why he's not getting referrals to his home. The survey he has created is not a valid survey. Um, the survey question number one asks about placements in twenty nineteen. Which staff do not track this data in aggregate form? Counties have no reason to use resources to gather this data, and if we did so, we would need to track this in a separately created database just for Mr. Becker. His second question asks about um emergency placements, of which there is no such thing. And his third and fourth questions ask about whether county staff uses Stearns County website for making placements. Um, Stearns County staff most often use a website that lists statewide current openings for housing. Um, so it helps to determine whether, where the openings are in the entire state, more often than they use the county website. Uh, counties are not required to have a website for this purpose. However, in response to Mr. Becker's concerns, we did look to see how many hits were on the website. And in doing so, we, it appears that there's not much use, there's not very, um, very many people are using it very frequently, so we plan to take it down. Um, but it's important to note that even if we were able to provide this information to Mr. Becker, it would not help him to get referrals. Um, Mr. Becker is largely not getting referrals because he does not have a two forty-five D license for his home, which is a required in order for him to receive payment for his home when clients are on a waiver. And most of our clients choose to go on a waiver because there's a much more robust array of services, and it's paid out of federal funds set aside for exactly this purpose rather than county taxpayer dollars paying for it. Um, getting to a two forty-five D license is a state-run process a provider must go through. Counties do not do this licensing. And there's very few clients that we serve who are not on waiver services, so Mr. Becker's ability to receive referrals is substantially diminished without him having this two forty-five D license. However, it's important to note that even if people with disabilities chose not to be on a waiver, that person gets to choose where they want to live. And it's up to Mr. Becker to advertise his home, and in doing so, he could potentially receive referrals from any county in the state, since people get to choose where they want to live and they frequently choose to live outside the county they're currently living in. So I'm happy to answer any additional questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have questions of Melissa, uh, or the, the explanation, the detail on, uh, uh, the foster care provider, uh, concerns? Do you have any questions? It's, this is information only, so it doesn't require action by us. Uh, uh, it's to clarify and answer, uh, the points that Mr. Becker made. Uh, anybody want to make any follow-up? Uh, and if not, uh, uh, we'll move on and reconvene the regular county board meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Melissa. Appreciate the detail. Uh, environmental services, uh, Shelley, uh, would you like to, uh, talk about the, uh, removal of hazardous, uh, uh, property issues there? Mark, I guess, is going to fill us in, or, or Shelley, go ahead.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair. Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director, and Mark Lateral is also, um, the WebEx. And we'll present the information. We are item G1, and it's on packet page fifty. This is in regard to Evergreen Manufactured Home Park, and I will let Mark, uh, review the information.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Um, as Shelley indicated, the item before you this morning is a request to the board to authorize the chair to sign hazardous nuisance property order for the Evergreen Hills Manufactured Home Park. Lot three-six in the park, a home that was posted as inhabitable by the department some time ago. Um, as you can see in the attached photos in the packet, the property or the park owners or the representatives have begun to dismantle the home to the point seen. Um, our staff have worked with the property or the Evergreen Mobile Home Park owners to get this home removed in its entirety. Uh, this order would allow an additional thirty days to, uh, finish that project. And if not completed within thirty days, it would allow the department to step in and complete the abatement similar to that, that we did this past spring with the order the board signed last fall for additional three other homes that we removed on the park. With that, Mr. Chair, um, I'd ask the board to give consideration for the signature of the order.
Uh, with the thirty, uh, with the thirty days, uh, then, and, and the time that has gone, uh, on already, uh, when is the, uh, drop dead end of the, uh, end of the consideration on this?
Before the county would act? Or the?
Well, any way you interpret it, just tell us, give us a date and tell us what that does and doesn't do.
So if the board, if, if the board would authorize you to sign the order today, it would give the prop, uh, the manufactured home owners thirty days to, to obey the, uh, the order or obey the violation. Um, with that, then, um, let me get to my order. Um, once it's been lawfully served, once the property owners have been lawfully served, they have thirty days from, from that. Um, after that, then we would seek a, um, motion for summary enforcement of the order through the courts. And once we had that court order, that, that county would then would step in, hire a vendor, and, and complete the removal of that home on lot twenty-six. So we are looking for, to finish this up before snow flies, so we're getting, you know, thirty days, hopefully end of November, beginning of December, we would finish abating that, uh, removal of the home.
But the reality is, is that physically, the home could still be there Thanksgiving?
Potentially, yep.
Okay, how about Christmas?
I would hope not. I would hope we would have it done by then. Given the status, if you see the pictures, the park owners have dismantled a great portion of the home. And actually, those pictures, there's more of that now that has been removed by the park owners. Uh, we are down to just a very limited portion of the homelessness there. Um, uh, as I said, this, this order would then just, uh, be basically an insurance policy to, to the county that they would continue and follow up and finish that abatement project on their own. And if not, then it would give us the authority to obey the, obey, finalize the abatement or removal of that home, so.
So approval potentially just starts to clock. Is that what I'm hearing?
It, it starts an official clock, correct?
Okay, or a calendar, uh, yeah.
I did, I did let, I did let the Pittsburgh, or the manufactured home park owners, the Pittsburghers, know of the meeting today. I did not receive notice that they wanted to attend or speak to us, so, um, I don't think they're in attendance at all, so.
All right.
Mark, I have a question. After all of this is taken care of, how many, how many homes will still be in that park?
Um, well, this will be the fourth one that would be taken out. I think there's still, I, I don't have a definite count, but I think the number is still going to be around that twenty-one number, twenty-one, twenty-two homes.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yep.
What is the status? I've lost track. What's the status on the park? Are they allowed to move more units back in, replacement units? How does this work?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, the park could, uh, on, and on the empty lots, the park could, um, bring new homes in. Um, they would need to meet the standards of our, of our zoning ordinance. You know, they need to be, uh, I don't know them all off the top of my head, but they'd be brought in, be anchored, secured, verified, you know, so, certain age. Um, it's not that, it's not that they were prohibiting them from bringing any homes in. Um, it's just we're trying to, um, ensure the safety and welfare of the residents there by eliminating hazardous structures.
All right. Uh, anybody have, uh, any other questions here, Mark?
Yeah, Mark, Joe Persky here. Say, Mark, uh, we've had a number of these situations in this park over the last few years. Is that not true?
That's correct.
How many, you know, approximately how many homes have had to be removed there? Offhand, an idea?
Well, this would be the fourth one that I've been involved with in my, in, in my, um, stint of, as supervisor. I'm not sure if the county, I think the county was involved with maybe a removal of a couple more prior to that. So, um, if I was to venture a, a guess, it was in the six to seven total number of homes. Uh, the county made over the years, but yes, as you point out, we did, uh, the board did authorize a, a similar abatement order last fall in which then we did proceed to hire vendors to those homes. We did finish up that project this past spring because mother nature kind of got to us last fall before we could get it all done. And then abatement costs went up because of the snow and whatnot, so we will spring to finalize those abatements, but those three homes are, are now out and those lots are vacant, so.
And, and Mark, as far as the cost recovery, has that cost gone back to the park or has the county been absorbing that cost?
No, the, um, the, the, the costs of abatement are a special assess back to the park owner, so.
Okay, and, and have, have they been taking care of those assessments? Uh, Randy, I don't know if that's a question for you or if it's for Mark.
Um, the park is on a payment plan right now, so, and they are maintaining the monthly payments that they need to, to keep up to date, so, so far, so good.
Okay, well, I, I, uh, I can understand the frustration, but I appreciate the efforts too. I, you know, we want to have affordable housing in the county, but we also want to have things safe and secure. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, somebody want to then do a motion to authorize, uh, uh, the removal as ordered?
I will make that motion, Jeff Mergan.
Thank you, Jeff. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Terrell. Uh, any further discussion? If there isn't any further discussion, uh, I would, uh, move approval. Uh, I'll call up by district, district one?
Aye.
Two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Five, Jeff, Steve? All right, Steve, all right, thank you. Okay, uh, thank you, Shelley. Uh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Mr. Chair, before Shelley leaves, could she just do a quick census update? Instead of to under, by, by Commissioner, because I think it's been a little confusing for folks about the deadlines, and we still have people who need to take the census.
Right, so it's my understanding that the census has been extended, so the people will be able to continually count those, uh, parties who haven't been counted until the end of the month. So they will continue to work on that. We, uh, did address some concerns in the Melrose area. And we're working to, uh, with our regional rep to make sure those areas are counted. And we're working to, uh, with our regional rep to make sure those areas are counted. So, um, we still have time to fill out the census, so if you have not filled out your census, please do so. Um, and you have until the end of October to complete that census form.
And Shelley, do you have any more? I know you had a meeting this week. Was there any more information about, um, my understanding from, um, Andrew Verden from the state census was that it is possible that there are people who haven't done it, kind of, that are so is there, is the city of St. Cloud or any of the other cities making any additional efforts that you're aware of? Uh, with, with apartment buildings or, or is the complete count making any additional efforts?
I have not heard of anything. I did not check in with Matt prior to this conversation. Um, but typically the city of St. Cloud has made effort with those apartment, uh, managers to make sure that, uh, people get counted. And they have done so in the past. So my expectation is just that they continue to do that work.
Okay, thank you. And, and obviously for the, I think we all know this, but for those who might be listening, it's important because it impacts the resources that come back from our taxpayer dollars that come back to our county for services. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, clarifications by board members, uh, before we, uh, move on to Randy?
Yeah, uh, Terrell, thank you for bringing up the subject. Uh, Shelley, uh, was the state going to continue to be active or, uh, or not? I had heard that they were actually going to, uh, shut down some of the collection now this week. Uh, however, it's going to remain open till the end of the month. Is that just for online? Do you know? Or are they going to continue doing, uh, door to door? Do you know?
Joe Persky, I am not sure if they were continuing. I know there's been variation, um, in, in different groups, um, how they wanted to proceed. But I know that it is still available online. I'm not sure how actively they are, are still canvassing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other comments by board members? If not, we'll, uh, move on to discuss the fee schedule. Randy?
Um, this has been on the, uh, board agenda. Before we held a public hearing, there were some questions on the, the sheriff's fees with the civil process and a few similar ones to that. Um, so the sheriff's office, Dan Miller, and as, as discussed, and with Commissioner Clark, the budget committee also did meet, and, um, we all kind of agreed at this point, we were proposing go to go from 50 to 70. And at this point, we're looking at going from 50 to 60. The costs still are over that, that amount. Um, but I think the thought here is to move this up slowly over time. Um, and I think the sheriff's office is going to be working at and studying this a little bit more. Um, if there's more, some more detailed questions, I believe Dan is on the call also from the sheriff's office.
Okay, questions by board members, uh, on these changes, these proposals? Uh, if not, uh, uh, we would need approval for those changes?
I'll make that motion. I, I really appreciate the, the looking at these. Uh, I guess we're calling this the Larry Haas approach, uh, going a bit more incrementally. And then, uh, I'd much appreciate, um, Dan Miller's work. And, and for those of you who don't know it, there is a regional group that looks at this and looking at some perhaps creative ways for the future. Um, and having some similarities because clearly we got some different levels of fees going around. And there's even some question about in the future, whether, how, how long it might be before the courts have this all done electronically or much of it done. So it'll be good to hear back from them and appreciate everybody's support.
Okay, any other, uh, observations on this?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, for combining a, a motion with an observation that I will move up.
Okay, then we need a second.
I will second that and appreciate everyone's work.
All right, thank you, Joe. Uh, any further discussion? There isn't any further discussion, uh, uh, all those in favor say aye. District One.
Aye.
Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four, aye. Five.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, the, uh, want to talk about waiving the penalty for second half property taxes? What's, uh, uh, I guess, uh, Randy, uh, you'd be leading that, uh, commentary. Any questions here?
Um, I'll just say a, a few things. Um, we did that for the first half, as you know. Um, elections came in very well. Um, still, there, there was, you know, some of that paid a little bit later, but, um, elections was still very, very strong. Um, we're not getting a lot of calls. I, I think the one area, um, where there might be some concerns is apartment owners with, um, some renters not paying. And then, um, I'm not sure that they're getting the help that they need. Um, um, we have done, of course, a lot of business assistance here, and, and I know they're working on individual assistance also. So, um, you know, the board can do what they want with this. If, if you're looking to do it, we would recommend going to December 1st.
Say, Randy, I did want to mention that I got a phone call late last week from a commercial property owner, um, that rents properties to commercial facilities, and they were as well concerned. And unfortunately, the CARES programs that we have had out there have not been, um, accessible to them because of their, their type of entity. Um, so I just thought I would throw that out there, that as well as the residential rental. It appears that the commercial rental, uh, owners have concerns as well. Thank you.
Oh, it makes total sense, uh, depend, and it depends upon the type of commercial property that, uh, one has. Uh, certainly, uh, certain, uh, retail type of entities, uh, could absolutely be hurting, uh, because their, their volume is down significantly. Uh, I'm sure there are other examples, but, uh, it's just my initial observation. Uh, any, uh, uh, input from, uh, uh, board members on this? What would, you know, and if they don't have any input, what would you suggest we do?
I, I'd like to ask as far as the first time we, you know, when we dismissed or delayed, uh, what was the impact there? And I mean, do we see something very similar to that as far as this time around? And does, do we have any concerns about our cash flow if we would?
Um, the effect was, was not significant. I think it was a few percentage, um, of the people paying late. So settlements really wasn't affected all that much, and we did make some additional settlements. In the fall, the settlements are a little closer together, and then we do a final one in January. So I assume this will be similar to that and the effect on cash flow and our settlements to the other jurisdictions, I think will be minimal. So I, I think we're fine in that regard.
Okay, uh,
With that, with that information, I would move that we do that till December 1st.
And I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, to waive the penalty, uh, on the second half payment.
And Mr. Chair, Jeff, I don't know if you were including this was, uh, to be eligible, the first half of the property taxes must be paid in full.
Okay.
All right.
I was assuming recommended board action, correct?
Okay, uh, well, with that clarification, uh, all those in favor say aye. We'll go by district, District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four, aye. District Five, Steve?
Aye.
All right. Okay, uh, we're making progress. Uh, we're scheduled for a break, but if, uh, does anybody need a break? Otherwise, we'll keep rolling into administration. Uh, normally, uh, hearing no cries of pain, uh, we'll, uh, uh, move into, uh, uh, administration. Uh, Mr. Williams, would you, uh, have some discussion on the five-year capital improvement plan?
Yes, I think I'll quickly just hand this off to Mr. Hamus, the Assistant Administrator, to, uh, take you through uh, what we're thinking at this time for our CIP. It looks a little different than the last time that you saw it. So, uh, go ahead, Steve. Thanks.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Um, I'm Steve Hamus, the Assistant Administrator. We also have in the room with us, Ben Anderson, our Park Director. We have Kevin Kornick, our Facilities Manager, and we have Sarah Och, our Financial, uh, Manag-, uh, Director. Uh, I'm going to share my screen.
Steve, while you're working on that, I appreciate your hockey here.
I, I'm, I'm trying. I, I figured it's, you know, all, all for a good cause. All right, so again, we're here today to go over the, uh, projects. Um, my, my family is not too thrilled, but, uh, we are here today to talk about our, our next five years, uh, capital projects. Uh, and to, um, approve the list of, of projects similar to what we did last year. Again, we are trying to bring these to the board each and every year so that we can, and be transparent with the public and let them know what projects are on our list over the next few years. Uh, so again, a capital improvement plan for those members of the public who are listening is a multi-year, um, planning tool to, um, look at the needs of our facilities, yeah, a park, a trail, or a building, and identify what work needs to be done and in what order is the county going to try to get that work completed. Um, ways of making sure that our buildings are maintained safely and efficiently in terms of energy usage, in terms of OSHA or ADA or other facilities needs. Uh, it preserves our investment and extends the life of our buildings, uh, as best as we are able. And from Sarah's perspective here, as well as the budget committees, to coordinate how we can finance these and have as little impact as possible on the county's budget or levy. Again, so we, the county uses, use, uh, our capital improvement plan to ensure that we're using our spaces efficiently. Again, we are wrapping up the Service Center expansion project. And, um, that has allowed us to shuffle things around in the administration building as members of the board who were at the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee earlier today. Uh, by the fact that some of our departments have just moved up to the service center. We had space to build a new courtroom inside the administration building to make courts, uh, cases happen in our space since we can't have a trial in the court building, uh, in a way that meets the state's, um, guidelines for COVID. Uh, our capital improvement plan provides a framework for how we can leverage funds from outside agencies, be it state or federal sources, uh, or other non-levy, uh, sources as well, uh, as a way to help, um, communicate those needs to those agencies and help us with the grant approval process. Again, it allows us to develop a strategic forward-thinking plan that looks at how we can finance these in a way that makes the most sense to keep our costs down. And again, to, um, coordinate and dovetail with other planning tools that the county has. The most recent one that, uh, the county adopted was the updates to the comprehensive. So the goals of this particular plan are to issue bonds when interest rates are, are favorable and, and to help in keep our existing payments, uh, go down, so we don't want to increase our debt, uh, payments in any significant way. We want to minimize the impact on the budget and the levy. Uh, we can do this because we are always looking at our debt. Uh, we're always looking at the projects and trying to ensure that the, uh, debt loads don't increase dramatically. Uh, in our current plan, uh, we have three different bond issues that are being paid off their final payments this year. And that, again, allows us to, um, add, uh, projects going forward without increasing the debt payments for the county. Uh, so again, our projects in this cycle are again to increase our physical security. You've heard me talk about this for the past several years. Our buildings were built, uh, many years ago when the, um, attitude, uh, towards safety and security were different than they were in a post nine 11 world. And so there is still remodeling to be done to buildings on the downtown campus. Uh, our exterior security improvements are ones that we've talked about for a couple of years to help improve uh, security overall to the campus downtown. Uh, we do have some continuing trail development that needs to happen as well as other park development for, for parks according to the Parks, uh, five-year plan that the Park Commission, uh, has adopted and the County Board signed off on. And of course, the big elephant in the room is looking at the law enforcement center and courts. And how do we plan ahead for the next 20, 30 years on that front? Uh, so breaking the, all the different projects down that you saw in your packet based on the, um, different types of projects, you can see that we have about $93 million in projects over the next five years that we're looking at undertaking. The vast majority, of course, are our infrastructure, which is just, um, building improvements or replacements. That's $86 million. We have $300,000 in just regular maintenance. We have, uh, three and a half million dollars on park development. We have just under a million dollars on security improvements and, um, $2 million on trails. And this is total cost, not just money that we'd be bonding for, but the total project cost that's entailed. Looking at each subject, uh, so looking at the infrastructure projects for the next couple of years. Uh, the first one is a administration remodel, and again, this is, uh, one that we have been actively working on. Uh, we were, were at one point before COVID hit, uh, finalizing the, uh, blueprints for the building. And now with COVID, and that's kind of put things on, on hold for a little bit. And we are taking some time to look at some of the, um, opportunities that COVID has brought us in terms of how to utilize the buildings and what changes that entails to how we would use the space. So the architects are going back to talk to some of the departments about how, how COVID is changing how we would use the buildings and any changes that would mean in terms of utilizing the space for giving people socially distant if that's necessary. How many interview rooms do we need? Other changes to the layout, uh, for operations that would be more efficient from things that we've learned in terms of keeping, uh, people out, having workers be more remote. How are we going to do more hoteling of staff versus individual offices and hoping to change some of the cost for that structure? And the next one is the household hazardous waste expansion. That's been on Shelley's, uh, list for many years that, um, our current facility is, is full. Uh, it is, we're not able to take, take on any more uh, types of recycled materials that we currently have, uh, at that facility based on the size of the building. And, um, due to some, uh, requests from the public and pressures to look at different ways of, of recycling different materials, uh, there is a desire to expand that building. That would be paid for completely by the solid waste fund. So there'd be no levy dollars going into that project, and there are enough dollars in that fund to take, take care of that request. The next three on this page are all tied up with the law enforcement center and the courts facilities. Again, the county board, uh, on the, your agenda today did approve, um, going out, uh, with a contract for a vendor, uh, to conduct the law enforcement center study. Uh, and so that one that for the $150,000, uh, was approved by the board today to enter into that contract. And we definitely need to undertake that study so that we know what the options are for a new, uh, court space and new jail. Again, the estimates that we have here for a parking ramp and the law enforcement center are based upon the, uh, last time we did a study back in 2010 through 2012. And those numbers may certainly have changed, uh, but we needed a new study to clarify what the current needs are based on how, what's changed in how jail operations work, what it, um, changes happened with, um, design of, of jail facilities. And again, some of the things that we've learned from, from COVID, again, at the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee this morning, the sheriff gave an update on, on how we've been utilizing, uh, the space, uh, in this COVID world and that can and will have an impact on long-term use of, of a jail's, uh, facility. In your packet, you did see on the project sheet for the law enforcement center, um, uh, excerpt from the Department of Corrections' recommendations to us the last time they inspected our facility and the fact that our facility does not meet, um, all of the criteria that the state would like. And again, according to the state, it has outlived its, uh, expected lifespan. Um, the next page is looking at just those maintenance projects and, um, much simpler, much, uh, easier to get a handle on. One is the, uh, new expansion of a, our geothermal field at the household hazardous waste building. We use a geothermal field to provide the heat and, uh, air conditioning at that. provide the heat and air conditioning at that facility. Current facility's geofield has had some technical issues, and if there's questions on that, I'll turn that over to Kevin. But we've been looking at doing an expansion of that to increase the efficiency of the systems. And again, that project will be paid for completely by the solid waste fund. The other maintenance project is an upgrade on the Administration Center boilers. Our boilers are currently, I believe, original to the building in 1991, and we are no longer able to get parts for those boilers in a way that makes sense. And so again, as we go to remodel the building, is the time to replace the boilers at the same time. And again, we are looking to get a big improvement on energy efficiency with that upgrade. Moving over to the Parks projects, again, you see the first three of these are all attached to the Wildwood Park. We're doing some engineering on the road for the main entrance into the park, and then development of the park, including some shelters and some peers out there. Not all of these projects for Wildwood will be paid for entirely by levy dollars. Some of this will be coming through from grants. And again, Ben has been very good about accessing legacy grants and other park funding from the state or federal government. And by having the project plan approved and articulated by the county, that helps us to get those outside funds. The next one on here is the Cronus, Lake Cronus Park Shower Facility, which has been on the bucket list for the Parks Department for well over a decade. I want to say probably 15, 20 years maybe. But that is a park that is jointly owned by us and Candy, Ojai County, and the stars have aligned for us to get that shower facility replaced. We're looking at about $280,000. That would be Stearns County's cost. But again, we are able to get some outside funding for a portion of this. And so we're only going to have to bond for at most $100,000 to get this facility replaced. The Parks Acquisition Project, I did give a new number to, although it has been on our project lists for the past several years. But we've reduced that from the $1 million that was there previously to half a million, which is what we think we need as match for some of the land acquisitions that the County Board has been reviewing in the past several months. I do want to point out one thing on here for Wildwood Development, too. I only have listed here the spending that will occur between now and 2025. We do expect that this project will have additional spending in '26. That would be another half million dollars. But that, again, we're only doing a five-year lookout at this point for the plan for spending purposes. The next sheet are security projects. And again, here we have another project that is not being funded through the bonds. This would be our Belgrade Highway Shop. It's the last of our facilities that doesn't have adequate fence around it. We have had issues at some of our outlined shops where materials would have walked off at some point in the past. And so we have been going through and putting in new security fencing at each of these facilities, one per year. Belgrade is the last shop that will be having their fencing improved, and this one is going to be funded by the highway fund balance. The other two projects here, one is downtown, and that is, again, to look at removing the ring road around the north half of the courthouse, which is land that the county owns, and looking to take that portion of the ring road out and putting in some security improvements so that, again, we keep cars and vehicles farther away from those facilities. And the last one on here is the only new project that you haven't seen previously, and that is to upgrade our key card system. Our key card system runs the security on most of our buildings. It's certainly all the downtown buildings, the Service Center, highway, parks, our Melrose Office. I don't think some of the outlined highway shops, but most of the county's facilities. And the vendor for that system is saying that our system that we have is no longer going to be supported. Its useful lifespan has expired, and we are going to need to upgrade that system either with our current vendor or with a new vendor. And that one is going to cost about $175,000 that we expect to happen within the next 12 months. And then lastly, is the trail projects. And we only have one trail project on the list for the next five years, and that is to complete the Beaver Island Trail. There are still some gaps in our land acquisition on there, and then some of the construction. And again, as you see, that of the $2.1 million, most of this is being funded by outside funds, and our match for this will be about just under a quarter of a million dollars that we have to come up with through the bond. In terms of what this looks like as an aggregate for all those, well, before I get into the spending, are there any questions about any of the specific projects from any of the Commissioners?
I'll have some overall comments at the end, but I don't have any questions now. Anybody else?
I do want to know if there are comments or questions, but I'd like to finish first.
All right. Thank you. Looking at the aggregate, this is what we're looking at in terms of the bonding. So again, the whole list of projects is $93 million. Looking at just the portion that the county would be expecting to bond for is just under $88 million. So as you see, we're expecting some spending this year of about $700,000. That number ratchets up to about $2 to $3 million in '21 and '22. And then as we get into the projects related to the Law Enforcement Center, what a parking ramp if we need to have one, and court space, that number goes up significantly to pay for those investments downtown. What that looks like in terms of the payments on a yearly basis, and as it relates new bond spending versus our existing, is on this sheet here. So you can see again that in 2020, we're spending about $4.5 million on our debt payments. But again, three of our bonds that we're paying off are leaving our debt payments this year. And so our existing debt payments going forward brought just over $2 million next year, and then down to $1 million in 2023. And so again, that allows us to be able to try to manage putting investments into our buildings and our parks and our trails in a way that does not increase the tax levy or the budget for debt payments by taking advantage of the timing of the projects. So that by 2025, when we're in depths of the new jail facility, that our debt payments will at that point just be over $5 million, just slightly above where we are currently today. And then the projected levy, because the levy and the debt payments don't always match up because some years we do spend down. Like currently, we are using fund balance to make payments on debt and to carry some of the project load on the Service Center. So our projected debt service levy, as you see, is staying fairly constant over the next several years, and then going up slightly as we move into payments on the Law Enforcement Center and Courts. So our timeline is, again, today, we're looking at the Board to approve the project list as it currently stands. Again, you've approved all of these projects in the past. The only project that is new, they haven't discussed previously, is the key card system upgrade. We would have to come back sometime fourth quarter to do another advanced funding resolution. You authorized one, I believe, in January. We would look at another one at the end of this year. Again, that allows us to incur debts that can be replenished when we actually do do a bond. We would then look at setting up a hearing on bonding in 2021 and doing a finance plan and having a public hearing on that bond in the first quarter of next year, and then potentially issuing a new bond for the projects for 2021 through 2023. So a small bond, not dealing with the jail or the Law Enforcement Center or any of that, just the smaller interim projects of the second quarter. Sarah can certainly talk about interest rates and where the interest rates are currently on the bond market, and what our overall bonding picture looks like. Again, if you have questions or comments on specific projects, Ben and Kevin are here to get in with any answers that I don't have any answers to. With that, I'll get out of this screen.
Okay, Sarah, would you have any additional comments for us to be aware of or to consider?
I did talk to our financial advisor about interest rates. She hasn't got back to me on what the specifics for Stearns County would look like. I do know earlier this calendar year, about first quarter of 2020, similar-sized bond that we were previously looking at to issue earlier this year, we had negative interest. So it was quite impressive time to take a bond at that time. I don't know what the current favor is, but I know that they're still favorable. As a reminder to the Board, the Budget Committee came to you earlier this calendar year and requested that we transfer $6 million of fund balance out of the general fund and move that $6 million into a capital projects fund that we were going to use as financing on capital projects to kind of patch our timing between debt, because we only have so much time to spend the bond dollars once we get them. We're not able to take out intra or take out bonds at a low interest rate and then not spend them because that would, that has IRS implications. So we did take out the $6 million from fund balance. And originally, the financing plan was to use that $6 million in the future to kind of patch in between to spread out the bonds that we were going to issue. So the last time we brought a financing plan before you, we had planned to issue bonds in the middle of 2020, and then wait until the parking ramp and jail construction to, in order to use that $6 million in the interim time. What has happened is with us moving back the Administration Center remodel and some of the other projects due to COVID, we have started dipping into that $6 million right now in order to finish the Service Center project and some of the minor other projects that have been done. So we have dipped into that $6 million by about $2.5, $3 million so far. And we'll continue to use that $6 million now at this time, earlier than originally discussed, in order to wait until we're ready to do some of this building or Administration Center and other buildings.
Okay.
I have.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other inputs by staff on this? If not, do we have any questions by County Board members? Well, if you don't have, yeah, go ahead, somebody.
Go, then I will.
Pardon me?
I was waiting until you or anybody else had something to say. Do you want me to go now, or I can wait until you're done, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Sarah. I'm still getting my act together.
You're doing great. So I guess part of my question is the, kind of what the timeline now is with the study for the Law Enforcement Center, and a little bit about that process, including community involvement, or when, like, when in the process will we actually be voting on that bond, having been involved in a lot of, a lot of school bond-related referendum, which we clearly don't have to do, knowing how hard it is to get the property taxes approved by voters for schools? I'm kind of wondering just about that process. I think our CJCC group has done some really good partnering work, so I'm kind of curious just about that part of the timeline. And then because of the useful life, like, what is our, the folks who are putting together the study, and I don't know if this is for Kevin, too, but what will be incorporated in that to try to figure out both maintenance, useful life, energy costs, that kind of thing, just so we're, frankly, getting the most that we can out of the next facility? Because again, thinking about how long it took to get a new tech and how long it might be to get a new Apollo, among others, it's just, yeah, I mean, it's something that's out there for our taxpayer, knowing that it's really important. I want to reinforce that.
I can speak to the, you know, how we set up the jail study, what we asked our vendor to do. Step one was a needs assessment to figure out, you know, what kind of a space do we need for a jail? How big does it need to be to support our county for the next 30 years? Same thing with the courts. What does their, what does courts look like in the next 30 years with caseload and judgeships and those kinds of things? Along with that, we have tasked them to do the assessment of what we have now, both the Law Enforcement Center, the courthouse, courts facility building, and basically put us together that, you know, here's what you need. The second part of that is a master plan to look at all the different options, you know, that they see to support those needs in the future. I'm, sorry, we've asked them to look at, you know, our current space, look at the courthouse, what changes we maybe can make there to supplement some of these programs as they get a little bigger, all the way down to, you know, identifying some infrastructure streets and land acquisitions, all those kinds of things. We've asked, when we did the RFP, that we were looking at an April 2021 board presentation with their findings. I think at this point, that's maybe a little optimistic, but my goal is to keep that project moving as fast as I can and still do a good job with it so that we can answer some of these bonding questions before getting too deep into 2021.
And to piggyback on that point, that one of the things that we've worked with the vendors is to ask them in terms of, again, infrastructure for the building, to make sure that we're thinking as best we can without a crystal ball in terms of technology, you know, utilizing some of the ITV and things that we're doing now, looking at energy efficiency wherever we can to make sure the building is as efficient as possible. They'll be looking at staffing as part of this in terms of what it takes to operate the building on a daily basis, as well as some of the programming. One of the things we've tried to key on is Commissioners who are part of, again, the CJCC very many times, is that mental health is a very big part of the majority of the people who end up in our jail have a lot of mental health issues, and that is either a cause or an effect of what may have brought them to be a resident of the facility. And so looking at programming and what we can do to incorporate into the building design for that end as well.
Okay. Any additional comments by Board members?
Mr. Chair? Go ahead. Well, I was just gonna.
Joe, take it away.
Okay. I was just gonna ask, I don't have the great wisdom on finances, but we got some people that do know finances. Just wondering about the interest rates, you know, we're looking at as low as we are here. And then about combining proposals, when we bring projects together, do we handle most of that stuff in-house, or do we go, for lack of a better word, outhouse? And then in doing that, do we have fees that are higher that, you know, we could actually save money if we combine bonding projects together?
Say, Joe, I can help you with that.
Okay.
Certainly, when we do a bond, we look at all the spending we think we're going to do the next two years. And in the past, we've actually also combined them. If a watershed district, for instance, needs funds, we'll combine as much things into one bond as possible to save those fees. So yes, we do look at all that and make sure that we keep the fees to the minimum, and we will continue to do that as we go forward. We're in constant contact with our watersheds, and as you know, we have to provide financing for them, too. So thing is, right, as Sarah was mentioning, we do have a limited amount of time to spend our funds. And I think this presentation mainly was talking about the project list. We'll come back at some point and talk about the financing in a little more detail.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, Randy. I'm always looking at a nickel.
Yeah. And in terms of your other half of your question on in-house versus outhouse, which is an interesting way of phrasing it, but we do have a crew that, again, But we, we do have a crew that again, we utilize as much as possible on all of our projects. You know, on the service center, we did probably a third. And Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but about a third of all the bid packs ourselves from painting to carpeting, you know, doing a lot of the work tiles on her own, and that saves quite a bit of money. When we talk to the architects, historically, we, you know, utilize this crew on, on all of our building projects as long as I've been here. And we typically are able to significantly bring projects in under budget and certainly under what they would have cost if we had hired everybody out from, out house.
Okay. Any other questions, clarifications, staff or county board members?
Yeah. Just one question, are they, so this whole study, is this strictly gonna be just strictly just looking at downtown? And maybe that's too early to answer that, but.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I, I think that the scope that we've given for the vendors is to let us know what the options are. I think the board was very clear back in 2010 and 12 that they wanted to remain downtown with the facility. Certainly no, however, no prior board can tell a current board what to do, no different than you can't tell a future board 10 years from now what to do. So if there are options for other, not that they'll designate a space, but what it would look like as a but for to do a facility somewhere else, they'll, they'll be able to tell us what those costs would be as opposed to doing something downtown.
And then another question related to finance. Does the state reimburse for like courthouse usage or jail expansion?
And that, that's a, that's a wish I think that all counties would, would love to see. However, in, in the statutes, when the courts were taken over by the state, the state was very clear that we are responsible for providing the state with whatever space they feel is necessary to operate the courts. There are some things that they will pay for, like they pay for their own technology. They pay for their own phone system and some of those things. They pay for their own furniture. But in terms of the space itself, that is strictly on the county's dime.
So they can come back and say, well, we don't like this old courthouse building where we got three or four floors. You know, we want a space that's more flat or one story, two story.
We'll be asking the, the state for advice in terms of what the courts are looking for. I wouldn't say that we are beholden to give them the exact blueprint that they want. We certainly, you know, don't have to spend $50 million more if we can come up with a design or a layout that is more efficient and, and provides them with what is required. I mean, I, I think that's, that's how I would put it. We are, you know, we're going to fund them what they're required, not necessarily what they want.
Okay. And hopefully this virtual maybe creates some.
One, one other thing, Steve, is when we do the jail, we're able to tap into the state's bond rating. It can provide a little bit favorable, more favorable rates for us.
I don't think they can get much lower right now, can they?
Not, not much. No, they're pretty good.
So, so kind of along those lines, a couple of things to notice. It's very possible, at least for the near future, that there will be a lot of hearings that are still done remotely. And they, like us, have had to figure out how to do things differently. So it'll be interesting to see as these conversations go forward, what that looks like. And thankfully, administration figured out how to get courtroom figured out, at least in the short term. Because with COVID, there are very few courtrooms that are big enough to do full blown jury trials, and that's why we needed to do that. So it's going to be interesting as we move forward. I mean, you can do them safely. So yeah, it'll be interesting with this, what, what ancillary opportunities or challenges you might identify.
Agreed. And again, I'd just like to point out in, in for the commissioners that again, that new courtroom was built completely by our own staff within, in about two to three weeks. Again, we were lucky that we had the space as we just moved the assessors folks out of the administration building. But Kevin and his team did a great job of very quickly turning around and getting that space configured and rebuilt in record time so that the courts could start to take advantage of it.
Yeah, it was pretty amazing.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chair, just as far as planning for the new jail, I don't know where we are with numbers. I was just wondering, do we have any ballpark figures as far as the number of needs is for tenants, new tenants in our jails?
That, that's something that again, the study will be looking at in terms of one, our, they'll be looking at past history of the number of inmates that we've had over the last five years. They'll certainly be taking a look at the changes that we've made and adapted during COVID. And the fact that we are only right now bringing in people that need to be in the jail and, and the sheriff's office is really scrutinizing who those people are. And what that means as we go into the future, again, in the short term and trying to extrapolate out in 30 years. Again, it, it's not an easy process and I'm glad I'm not the person who's trying to quantify those numbers. But that's why we are hiring these outside folks to do that. And if there's no other comments or anything on that, again, I would just let the board with motion to adopt the updated project list.
I just wanted to be clear here. This is just a plan, right? And, and each project will come before the board for consideration of, of, based on its own merits. Am I correct in all of that?
This is just the plan. You're just approving that these are the projects that staff are working on in terms of trying to figure out financing and accomplishing studies. Like the fact that the board approved hiring a firm today to do the jail and law enforcement center study. We would be coming back at different points to actually, as Randy indicated, to talk about financing. The board approve or deny individual projects. So we're not saying that today we're approving building the jail. That is not happening today.
And all of the other projects that were mentioned along the way too, right? They'll actually come back and then approval would be based on their own merits.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments by board members? Uh, any other additional insight by staff? All right. My observations on this is that there are three things that are going to impact a lot of the things we do going forward in terms of our capital spending, a physical thing. One is the ongoing advancement of technology that'll conceivably create new need. The ongoing march of increasing security requirements based on just what you see in the news. You know, a lot of those structures and a lot of that personnel and a lot of that equipment is our public resources. And finally, regulations change over time. The, I do remember the, the big wave of regulation that came out of the Department of Corrections. Oh gosh, this is back when I started. Department of Corrections decentralized incarceration, which generated a significant expansion of jail capacity all across the state. You know, I mean, you, as you go to other counties, as you look at our county, all you have to do is you look at the cornerstone of those structures. And you'll see a lot of those were built in that late eighties, late to late nineties window and the regulation change. Also, the timing on when we do some of this stuff is impacted by some financial needs. Someone correctly made the observation, well, where are interest rates going to go? Should we be accelerating our capital spending because debt is cheaper? Also, whenever we get into these discussions sooner or later, the discussion of bond rating comes up. And bond rating is not, local bonds aren't just within our control because the bonding agencies also look at the expenditures of the other local units of government, whether they be the cities or the school districts and so forth. So their capital needs are a consideration as well. And we don't have control over those types of things. Also, when we do capital improvement, sometimes that's generated by opportunities for outside money. So in, in some respects, we don't have control over the timing of it. What, one of the graphs that was shown in this presentation shows a significant increase in spending in the 2023, 2025 period. Should we be taking advantage of the low interest rates now and be accelerating that? Historically, what this board has done is to use bonding as a way to smooth out our levy. So we don't have significant jumps or reductions in our levies as we go forward. And that winds up being part of the equation. Our future capital needs in terms of plant and equipment. Who'd ever thought that security costs had become a, a much bigger deal than they are now? One of the things that I've, and it sounds a little crazy when I'm doing on a commercial appraisal, I make the point that buildings get old faster than they used to, which sounds like a ridiculous statement. A 20-year-old building is still a 20-year-old building. But if you just look at things like heating, ventilating, air conditioning and so forth. And as I mentioned, internal security, a lot changes in that period of time relative to how, whether they're government buildings or their private sector structures of how things are done. Well, this doesn't happen in the private sector. And my observation is baloney. Look at the relative, just in our community alone, you know, greater St. Cloud. Look at these relatively new structures that are being relatively new. A 20, 25-year-old timeframe that are being demolished and replaced with brand new ones. I just, what was it? Shopko just announced that that building is going to be torn down and replaced with a new one. But you, you know, you go look at our commercial sector and there's a variety of those projects that have taken place. And then you get into philosophical discussions. How should we be using reserves? And there's a, a difference in philosophy, a difference in thought on the use of reserve. You know, if you need a spectrum and you put a face on it, a human face on it, you put Randy on one hand and you put me on the other end. Randy is a big believer in, well, you know, protecting reserves. And my attitude is reserves are there for a first, a purpose. Use the damn things. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's fun to joke about that, but really it comes in our discussion. It's pretty easy to see where our heads are at in that. So that's a philosophical discussion though. So another, sometimes how we use outside space is impacted. This whole security issue is impacting parking. How close do we want vehicles to get to our public building? You know, they can pack vehicles with bad things and push them right next to a public building and then make pretty bad things happen. So I, I think in the future, the idea that we're going to have the interface of parking convenience versus parking and security. But I'll spare you the balance of my rant. But the good news is, is in this presentation, bits and pieces of what I've tried to summarize here have been covered. And you folks are in various ways are pretty much up to speed with how this is going forward. I mean, the, the jail, the new jail discussion, you know, sooner or later, usually about in the middle of the discussion. The proximity of jail improvements versus courts. Because if someone's in the jail sooner or later, and sometimes multiple times, they have to go to court. So how do you do that? How do you do it in a secure manner? When you consider the cost of personnel, can you figure out ways to move, move folks between those structures without going outside? If you're going to take people outside, you're going to need more, more people to do that. Whereas if they're in a contained area, you can get by with less and using things like cameras, technology and so forth to track those folks even internally in our structure. So to your credit, gang, this is a damn good discussion. We've got some opportunities presented by low interest rates and some challenges going forward. And we're in a pretty good spot in terms of, you know, it isn't just the outside inside aspect of it. We have more, more fiscal talent to have these discussions internally than we have had in the past. So in the past, well, when I first came on board, say that first decade, the discussions we had like this, by comparison to what we're doing now, be almost comic book quality. So you folks, do your credit. You've gone with the changes and met the challenges. And without a doubt, we don't have all the answers, but we're better equipped to ask better questions than we have been in the past. Appreciate the update, folks. Now it's the time of year to be handling discussions like this. But low interest rates are going to be with us according to the King Banyan Federal Reserve type people for the next, well, maybe even two years. So that, that's a window of opportunity too. But I don't have anything else. Appreciated the discussion. And I just like the idea that we're not responding to the latest crisis. Looking down the line is important. And you folks have fulfilled the need, so that's helpful. I'll spare you any more of this, but that was, that was good. I think we're probably to the point where we can do issues by commissioners. We're not too late.
I asked for a, the board to approve this item.
Oh.
With the project list.
What do you think, folks? Who wants to make that motion? Okay, I'll make the motion.
I was gonna say, I'll be happy in a second. I was just, I'd give people a chance to make the motion.
Thank you very much. Obviously you're aware that I have certain. Obviously you're aware that I have certain. Physical needs here. All. All those in favors, all those in favor say aye, District one.
Aye.
Two. Did two respond? Okay, three. Aye. Four, aye, Steve.
Aye.
Alrighty, well, you got. You got. This approved. We can go to items by commissioners now. You got my load, so I'm done. So. Cheryl, you got anything else? Let's see, you brought it, you brought.
Go quickly. Randy, I'm just wondering if you could give us an update really quickly on early voting? About how many people have come through? Or slips?
Yeah, I don't have numbers, but it's obviously been very heavy. And in response, one of the things we have done is done a drive-through drop-off that started this morning. Drop off their ballots. At our service center off by Millsley Farm, we have tents set up and people that are taking ballots. So you don't even have to get out of your car, you can just come in and drop your ballots off. And you can drop off ballots for up to three people. And of course, we need an ID and a signature if you do that. Cause we were getting 150 plus per day of people dropping off ballots. So we wanted to keep that out of the building and how it'd make it more convenient for citizens.
That's great. And maybe for our next meeting, if there's a way just to have some information, like for our rural, the township or small cities that get the ballots automatically kind of. We have some idea about how many of them have come back through as well as others, that'd be great. And just please again, thank the staff. I know it's been a robust even voting in person, so. Certainly, I might, I just want to keep saying that I keep, people can come in safely.
Yep.
Last week, Dave Walls did it, had it was interviewed on WJON by Bob Hughes and. Bob Hughes, okay, he's a media person, but is genuinely interested in the voting process. And asked terrific questions and. If you ever have engaged Dave in this discussion. I don't know. We're, let's put it this way, I'm grateful we got somebody on staff that really likes to get involved in the nuts and bolts of the whole process. And terrific interview, nice job.
I very much agree and that's all I've got, Mr. Chair.
All right, District two.
Yes, Randy, thank you for your work on the elections and Dave's too. You guys have done a great job over the years. Real quickly, I got some feedback from Census Department when we were talking about that earlier. They will extend the census online especially and by phone through the end of the month. They've cut back on some of their other collections, so if people still want to be counted, they can make those contacts. I've had a few reports, a good number of ports, Randy, I was going to ask you about political signs. Signs have been vandalized, signs that have been taken and I maybe should have asked Dan at the time when he was maybe on about this question. I don't know if we got the sheriff or Dan available, but people are quite concerned. One person had the sign taken out of their yard four different times and. You know, where is that or I know we have rules about the signs, but what is that considered as far as disruption of signs?
Yeah, I'm not a law enforcement expert on this, but certainly, you know, should report it to the sheriff's office or your local police. It can be a campaign violation also. So, but it all starts with the law enforcement, when their investigation and then from there.
Yeah.
Big Lake, there's a guy in Big Lake that. Wrapped his campaign sign in concertina wire. I get the feeling nobody will be taking that sign. And if they do, they're one tough SOB, so I don't want to mess with them.
But likewise, Mr. Chair, I know somebody in Stearns County that has put manure around theirs, so.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
That's all I.
The concertina, concertina wire. Of course, you know, the neat thing, if you put manure there, if it's on your lawn, you don't have to remove it, you know. Next spring, you have a great lawn, so anyway.
Okay, but I'm just wondering if we do have the sheriff or Dan on, if they can comment about that. Are they on?
No, they're, they're not on.
Okay.
But I know they've had a number of calls. In fact, it was, it's been a part of their newsletter, I think, the last two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Had those kinds of issues and they do respond.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move on.
Okay, District three, what do you got, Jeff?
I have nothing.
I've got the same thing. District five?
I think I phoned that too.
Hey, three of us are nothing. Well, anyway, good thing the fine minds had some input here. Well, if there's nothing else, folks, I'm, I want to say that we're adjourned. Thank you very much. One of the better meetings we've had.
See you, everybody. Nice to see you.
Adios.
Bye.